We can get underway. There's a lot to cover in a short hour and a half period, or hour and 55 minute, or 25 minute period. But we're going to get us started here. So we'll call it to order at 6:05. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Carrie, if you've called, roll, please.
Certainly council persons do pray. Not here. Higgins is not here. Kelsey?
Here.
Ross, here. Salsito, here. Tobin and Merrick.
Here.
This is unusual, and that is a half hour longer than we usually call the meeting. So I'm going to say that is the culprit. The person of this person, the reason for this meeting is a study session on the water system improvement plan. For those of you that have been following us, you know that our water loss we've been dealing with is approximately 35%. A lot of that, or a good portion of it, is due to the fact of we have water main breaks, the other water loss that we are not aware of. So this has been a priority for the last, I think, year, to identify where the losses were. We have made some improvements, but in the end, determined that our aging system, our water system, is not up to the task. There was a plan in the early 90s in which a section of Lincoln Park had been redone. And as, wouldn't you know it, that that is the place where we have the fewest number of water main breaks. That's what we're here to talk about today. We're going to start with our city manager, James Cratton, has a presentation for you, and we'll get underway. So we have Mr. Bear and Mr. Zorro with us as council candidates. We invited everyone that was in the race to be a part of this. That's why it was scheduled for, even for the outgoing members, had the benefit of our experience, and then so that you guys know what you're walking into if you are getting elected. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cratton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you so eloquently put, the city has been experiencing significant water loss, significant water main breaks over the years. It's becoming clear that the water system has essentially reached the end of its useful service life and needs to be updated. So I've put together some information here. We've had a whole team for the last year looking at the issue, and specifically the last, the last few months, really digging in and really putting together all the information that you're going to see today, which we couldn't do without our partners everywhere. So just a quick background here, you know, we're an older city. Much of the city was developed before 1960, and with that, our water infrastructure was developed before 1960. Our water mains have an average age of approximately 80 years old. Considering that these are cast iron pipes with an expected lifespan of between 75 years and 100 years, really based on when they were installed, the older ones actually had a better lifespan than the newer ones. You know, right there, we're reaching the end of our useful service life within the system. As these pipes have aged, they slowly corrode. Corroded pipes become brittle and are susceptible to breaking. A couple of quick things here. Water pipes tend to break. Two major things happen. The freeze and thaw of the winter season causes ground shifting, which causes the mains to break. But also, there's a phenomenon called a water hammer, and this takes place when changes in pressure essentially shoot, shoot sound waves through the water system, causing vibrations, causing breaks. And that's a very base level understanding of it. But water main breaks are something that are very costly to repair. Just some evidence here. Last couple of years, 2020, we had reported 80 main breaks. 2021, 120 main breaks. As of August, we were at 141 main breaks. So as you can see, the system is exponentially getting worse. It's costly. We've got the cost of labor to repair, materials to repair, cost of restorations once the repairs have been done, and then, of course, the water loss that comes with it. All these things come with a cost. And not to mention whether we do it in-house, out of-house, we found that the total costs for doing them are pretty comparable, but they're significant both ways. According to estimates, our water main breaks cost the city about $4,480 on average for the material and restoration cost. That doesn't even include the cost of water loss. For those who aren't aware, water loss at its base level is water that's purchased or produced by a system and isn't able to be sold to customers either through leaks or unmetered, unmetered water. Water loss is really problematic for a water system and can be extremely costly. A couple of things that can attribute to water loss, unmetered water usage, water leaks, main breaks, and also water theft. All these things add to the water loss. In our system, for every about 10% of water purchased that isn't billed to a customer, it costs the system about $251,000 annually. And as our system has aged, we've seen the water loss continue to grow. Currently, we're in the 35% range pretty consistently the last few years. I think even this year, we're trending in that, in that direction as well. So thinking about that, you know, you're talking just shy of $1 million a year of water loss cost. And right there, we, with 114 main breaks on average over the last three years, the city spends about $500,000, a little more than $500,000 annually, to repair these main breaks. So with the water loss cost, the water main break cost, we're looking at essentially $1.4 million annually because of the age of the system. This represents over an entire mile of water main annually that could be repaired. It also represents about 10 new DPS workers or the potential for water rate decreases. Not only is it a financial cost, but we also have a public safety and a public health cost and risk with water main breaks. When you get a significant drop in water pressure and you get down to a dangerous level of water pressure, the chance for bacteria to enter the water system is there. This leads to what you often hear of the boil water advisories that get placed. Boil water advisories are done as a preventative measure. I don't know if anybody's ever really been a part of one. They are extremely, extremely inconvenient. I was, I was part of one actually this summer on a vacation in Tennessee when we had to go through a boil water advisory for, I think, three of the, three of the days we were there. It's really inconvenient, but, you know, again, there's that public health risk that's there. Also, drops in water pressure carry significant risk to fire suppression systems and commercial These suppression systems, often the sprinklers, they require a certain level of pressure in order to operate effectively, and also to even be up to code to operate. Fire department also relies upon a consistent water pressure for them to be able to fight fires once they've taken off. They get this water pressure for their hoses through the fire hydrants, which is connected to the system. So while we have an old water system, and we haven't done a ton of replacement in it, we did have, we did have a reasonably major program back in 87 to 1990, which spent about $8 million to upgrade the system. And actually, some of the charts up there, you can see where those upgrades were taking, had taken place.
Excuse me, James. I'm sorry, but the audience can't hear us.
Yeah. Interesting. Is that any better?
Yeah.
All right. Beautiful.
I was from the feedback loop earlier.
Okay.
Let's keep talking.
All right. So, so we did, 1987, 1999, we did have a pretty significant program. But since then, we had a very long stretch of time where we didn't do any upgrades. Recently, we've begun doing about one, one mile of water main per year. But at this pace, considering we've got 130 miles of water main in the system, it would take two lifetimes to replace the system. With the current escalation of the deterioration and the current issues we're seeing in the system, this, this pace is unsustainable. So to combat this, we're going to first start with the first two years where we're going to be implementing a more aggressive program. This is, the, the funding has already been approved by this body through the use of ARPA funds. Over the next two years, we're going to replace approximately five miles of water main at an estimated cost of $5 million. The sections in these two years that are going to be replaced are those that have experienced the most significant number of water main breaks over the last five years. This should help reduce the system maintenance costs, hopefully reduce some water loss, and get us on track a little bit. However, we need, we're going to need to do more. But so for the next, for the first two years, 2023 and 2024, we have seven, seven main stretches of water main we're going to do. These include Gregory, Buckingham, and Pagel in 2023, London, Richmond, Merrill and Stewart in 2024, and all of these sections are from Dix to Fort Street. Now, this is a great jumpstart, and it's going to, going to certainly help, however more is needed. If we don't do any serious action beyond this, the city is going to continue to experience an additional 28 water main breaks every year, according to estimates. This represents continued costs in our system. By the year 2029, if we don't do anything, the city can expect to have 307 water main breaks per year, which would, just in labor, materials and restoration, and not counting water loss, represents just shy of $1.4 million a year. So it's clear, the only real option we have is to do something to try and increase the amount of upgrades per year. I've been using the term lately, crisis point. I think that right now, the city's water system is at a crisis point. So we're looking to, to replace approximately six miles per year over five years, and we'd be able to replace nearly a quarter of the system. This would help, help find significant savings from water loss, cost of water main breaks, which can then be reinvested into the system over the next 20 years. However, to do this, it's going to require a massive influx of cash into the system. We really only have a couple avenues by which we can do this. The first one is to increase water rates, which would set up essentially a pay-as-you-go system, much more costly on an annual basis. And then, once you've done the, the projects, your, your rates are much higher than you need. We'd also have to raise the rates to an unacceptable level at this point, to a point where the water system and the water bills would be unaffordable for residents. Another option is locating various grants. This is something the city and our engineering firm consistently do on an aggressive basis, but the amount of funding needed is not likely to be covered by grants. The other, the third option is, is financing the project, which, for those not familiar, would require us to take on debt over a longer period and essentially spread out the cost of this project over a number of years. Help us have a lower annual cost and make it more affordable for the city to do. The two main ways to do this that we have for the system is going to be either through a revenue bond. This, this is an option because the water system does produce its own revenue through rates, and so we can secure the, the bond on a pledge that, of the revenues. However, this would require the city's rates to be at such a level that not only does it fund the annual costs of the system, the annual debt cost, but we'd also have to raise rates to a point where we can fund a bond reserve account, which would be about one year's worth of debt payments. I think that would make the, make that option a little too expensive, which is why we're starting to look at this other, this other option, which is a voter authorized general obligation bond. What this would do would make it so that we would have the authority to levy a specific millage to cover the debt payment for the bonds over the life of the project, of the project and then the debt. Based on advice from our financial team, estimates were created to take a look at, at the cost of bonding over three different scenarios. Looking at a 20-year bond, 25-year bond, and a 30-year bond. Just a couple of quick things on that. The, the shorter term of the bond is going to carry a smaller interest rate. For those who aren't aware, of course, investors who, who are going to tie in for a long term, they're going to want to see a higher, higher result on their bond. So a 30-year bond, you're going to see a higher interest rate than you would with a 20. So with that information, I put together the following table that's on the, the presentation here that shows kind of an expected cost, looking at the millage that we would need for the first year of the bond, millage, the highest millage we would require, the last year's millage, and then what we would consider the, the average rate over the course of, of the bond. I've also put in there to make it a little more accessible, the cost per year for somebody with a home whose taxable value is $60,000. So if you look at the table, a 20-year bond, and this is assuming a four and a half interest rate, which we're hoping is going to be high still, we're still hoping that we might be able to get into some revolving fund loans that would be less, right? But at four and a half percent interest, a, a home with a taxable value of $60,000, you're looking at a range between $80.64 per year, up to, at the peak, $170.91 per year. So then, 25-year, you're looking at a range of 85.12 all through to 148.77. And then on the 30-year, you're going to have a range from the first year to the, to the peak of 89.60 to 133.97. What you'll find is, is financing over the longer term will result in lower annual payments. However, the higher interest rate, the longer term, is going to result in overall higher costs over the life of the, of the debt. I, I would, I would recommend, and I've been, I've been kind of recommending right now the 20-year bond, because we're going to, once this program is done, we're going to still need improvements. And we're going, we're not going to want to have the debt hanging around the, the city for too long. I can understand that might be more aggressive than we, we ultimately decide to do, and we might decide to, to try and keep the, the bond payments a little bit more affordable. But, I mean, the, the positive to going with the 20-year is that, once you've, you've only got about 13 years after the project is done, that you're still making payments without actually seeing results, right? So that's the presentation I have right now. We have, we have our team from Hennessy here who have put together some, some information and some drawings on, on where we would be looking at doing repairs, some comparisons.
I had just, in the 94, or the 88 to 94?
87 to 90.
How was that funded?
That was funded the, through a tax author, a voter authorized general obligation bond.
And how long was the duration of those?
Shoot, I should have, hang on. I've got that written down. I believe that was a 15-year bond, looks like. Series one was 15, series two was 15. So we were paying it off for about 20 years.
And how would these payments, would the citizens be making, on the water bill? Or is it part of the taxes?
They'd be part of the taxes.
Okay. Councilwoman, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because if we're going to take this, this section that has most breaks in it, and we're going to work on that section, what are we doing contingency wise to look at what's going to be happening in other sections once that's repaired? Because we're still going to have main breaks. So we're still going to have the cost. We might not have as many, but we're still going to have them. So we've got to be prepared to take care of those. How are you looking at that and all this cost?
So, these first two years are hitting the, the two worst sections. After that, I'll let our Hennessy, our Hennessy team kind of present the, the planned program, because we will be hitting a significant portion of the, of the city. Of course, we're not going to be hitting all of it.
Are you only talking a quarter?
We're talking about a quarter. Thankfully, the 87 to 90 program is going to help, because if, if you look at the charts over there, those are the areas where we have very few water main breaks. Of course, we're, it's going to take time. I think if we can continue to pour that one and a half million additional into the system after this project, we can continue to do roughly a mile and a half every year additional to what we've been doing. So we're still going to be able to be more aggressive on, on the water main replacement, which will eventually lead to replacing most, if not all, of the system. It just will take time.
How long? Are we still talking 20, 30 years?
Yeah, you're still, you're talking 130 miles of pipe, even if we, even if we had $200 million right now to do it, it would take.
And this, this section that we're talking about doing right now, how many miles is that going to cover approximately?
We're going to be, I think, over the life of this project at about 30 miles.
30 miles, so that means 100 miles of city that still needs to be brought up.
Right.
And we have to be mindful that that's going to be a cost to us.
Absolutely.
And how far we go with it, we're still going to be kind of in the same boat. So I think it's important that we keep that front and center and look at some kind of solutions.
Right.
To try to improve the water loss in that area and how to maybe stop some of these breaks from happening.
Well, yeah, and this is, honestly, the only way you're going to stop water main breaks from happening is replacing the pipes. There's, there's really not much preventative measures you can take into place. You can try and, I wish we could try and prevent the freeze and thaw from happening, because then I would just keep it at the post-thaw and nice and warm forever, but, but we, we can't do that. We can try and limit the amount of pressure swings we get in the system, which is something we're going to be doing as well this spring by installing pressure relief valves on two of our meters that come from GLWA. So that should help on that. But you're right, we're not going to hit the entire system. The rest of the system is going to continue to age, and it is going to break. Now, if you've got most of the system at 80 years to 100 years old versus 75% or 65% of the system at that age, you're going to decrease your water main breaks. Because at some point throughout the city, if you, if you look at where all the water main breaks are happening, it is all over the city. There are some significant sections, and those are the ones we're going to hit first. But then, as we can continue to roll out, we'll continue to work using, using a data-driven approach, right? Looking at where the water main breaks are happening, where the worst ones are happening, so that we can continue to address and move forward. So as I was saying, we've got our Hennessy team here to, to help show the, the project and the, the program that we've, we've established and put, you know, we're putting forward here. We also have our financial team here that can answer any questions on the bonding and any of the, the nitty gritty, because I know just enough to really mess it up. So if you guys, if, Hennessy, if you guys want to come up and kind of explain a little bit of the, what went into how we came up with the program.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. What we did was we took about a decade worth of main break information and data, gritted the city out and found the, the sections that had the most water main breaks. And we decided that a systematic approach, trying to go after the worst areas first, would probably be the best way to handle it. So we compiled the data, added all the main breaks up, and then started taking measurements of how much pipe we could replace in, in these sections, and tried to keep it in, in a, in a fashion that, when you're replacing it, keeping your mobilization down, keeping your cost, keeping it as efficient as possible, so as you go through the city, you're not jumping all over the place. And, you know, that cost, it has a cost to it. So that's, that's how, the board that has all the dots on it is representing the, the main breaks by year. So that's how we, that's how we came up with the areas to go after, to get the most, get the most reduction for, for the investment that you're going to get. So as you can see on the, on the outside board there, sections 27 and 21, that's where the 87 to 1990 water main replacement happened. And you can see on the, on the water main break board, there's practically very, very few water main breaks in that area. So that kind of shows the effectiveness of replacing the, the water mains in, in the system, which when you start replacing these sections as you go through the city, as to your question about the rest of the city is going to have water main break problems, that's true. But you, you know, if, if you didn't go after this, this problem, it would accelerate to a point that you couldn't keep up with it. As you can see, the, the water main breaks that are, that you're having this year is, you know, they're way up there. And as the subsequent years continue to go, that's going to be a continual problem. So as replacing this water system, like Mr. Cratton said, it's a place to start, and it gets you, gets you in six years to a place where, as you can see on the information, we put some values to like what, what it means in real, real money to what, what you're going to see as far as reductions in water main breaks, how much, how cost effective it is, you know, where you're going to retain some revenue, and, you know, gives you some kind of idea of what your investment in the system is going to produce.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Sure.
Dean, what is the material used? I mean, can we, can we expect another 100 years once this is done out of these water mains?
Yeah, more than that. Life, yeah, the product's now HGP C900, which is a PVC water main. Their, their life expectancy is far exceed, you know, 100 years. I mean, they're, they're like 500-year life expectancies on that product.
Wow.
Yeah, they, they, unless you have some kind of situation where you have a contaminated ground situation that would affect the pipe, but that's, that's kind of like if you're in industrial applications or some things of that nature.
What about the ones that were done in 87, 94?
Them will, them will primarily be ductile iron, which is a woven type of flexible pipe. But the, the product, ductile iron is a very expensive product in today's, you know, market, and they didn't have the plastics available that they do now for water replace, system replacement.
What would be the life expectancy for that? 100 years?
Yeah, ductile iron's probably 150 years. Yeah, ductile iron's probably 150 years.
You all set?
I'm all set. That was, I love that answer.
Yeah, so, also, something we looked at is another issue that faced the city, and we didn't want to get too far into the off-line, but the lead line, lead line replacement is an issue confronting the city also. So we looked at that also in our process for deciding where to go, to, as we're going to replacing the mains, you're going to be replacing these lead service lines. So it's kind of like you're in a situation where you're going to be accomplishing two things at one time. And I took and put at the top of one of these boards, I think it says on that one there, you know, the estimated lead lines in each section, and in six years, it accumulates to like 1,300 lead lines that will be replaced, which I think you're required to replace about 200 and some change a year right now. So that'll also help you comply with that function also, which is pretty good.
Question to the chair, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Are these water mains underneath the road, or are they in the easement?
It's a combination. Some are like right on the edge, some are in, some are out. But yeah, they're predominantly, I would say, in or on the edge of the roads, yeah.
So that would have to be some sod and grass replacement, correct, then? Because it'd be right on the, I don't know if the curb will probably come out, right? When you're doing the water main in the street?
Well, probably, yeah, probably what we'll look at, the process of changing out, if you have room under the sidewalk or in the easement, actually remove the main from under the road, so in the future, you don't have to deal with that.
Tear it up, okay.
Yeah, try to, you know, try to get them out of the road as much as possible, wherever you can do that.
Are those lead, through the chair, are those lead lines, they're going from the stop box all the way to the meter in the house, right? So you have to dig, or what do you call it, there's a machine that does it?
Drill them, yeah, they'll generally directional drill it right to the house from the water main, yeah.
Now, is that going to, that will tear up the grass a little bit, right?
Yeah, usually, the person on the short side, which the short side's the water main, side the water main's on, the house is on the same side, you know, they get, you know, excavation in the front yard plus up by the house.
Right.
Long side's generally just up by the house. You know, the curb stop usually gets changed out in the process, so there's usually two excavations on each hole, or each home or property.
Through the chair, what's the current projected cost for the lead line, though, to be replaced? I don't know if that's in this for the water mains too, or this is just a water main, and we're going to do the lead line, but I know the lead line's expensive just to do that.
Yeah, it will be part of the process of changing the mains out, because you have to change them out when you change the mains out, you can't. But generally speaking, during the water main change-out process, they're changing the service lines as part of the bid, so you usually, you know, because of the quantities, you get a really better rate than when you just go after the line itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
No, unless you guys have something else.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I think it might be appropriate to kind of have our financial team lay out the process that we would have to follow, how this would all work, timing, all of that. I'll yield the floor.
Good evening.
Steve Mann with Miller Canfield. He serves as line counsel to the city. If the council decides that you want to move forward with the voter general obligation bond issue, the process would be to determine the size of the project, the maximum not to exceed bond amount, and then we would prepare a resolution for council to approve, which authorizes the ballot language, much like you did for your roads program. And then the ballots will be twirled before the voters. You currently have three elections to choose from May, August, or November, and your language would need to be valid, need to be certified at least 12 weeks before the election cycle. And if the proposal was approved by voters, then you'd be authorized to issue the bonds. And again, much like the roads, we would work with your engineers to determine how much of the project you could complete within a three-year period, once you issued the bonds, and extend the proceeds for a few years. And you have a couple of series of issues, it's probably two series, probably five or something of construction for the project. That's a high overview of bond issue's process. If you have any questions?
Interest rates, or how you would market or sell the bonds? Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
We have a bond already for the roads, though, right? We took a $20 million bond out, where are we at with that? Do you know, or is, I mean, are we halfway there, or we're still? That's what I'm kind of asking.
We, Bobby Benzinski, Benzinski and Company. I was going to call the city manager and the controller tomorrow to discuss a sale date. I know that they've been very busy with this project, we've seen many emails over this, so I didn't want to bother him, but we hope to come to market within the next two to three weeks for the second series of the road project.
And that will be how much we're going to bond?
6.9 million.
6.9, so, through the chair, we'll have that part to bond with whatever interest rate we're talking about right through the market, or however you guys do it.
When we receive the bids in two to three weeks, we will know what the interest rate is at that time. We would follow kind of the same process once the water bond proposal passes. As Mr. Mann indicated, we would try to size this to how much you could spend in a two-and-a-half to three-year period, and then sell a series of bonds, just like the road project. You don't know your interest rates until you actually sell the bonds. So if interest rates rise, you pay a higher rate. If interest rates go down, you pay a lower rate.
Through the chair, where do you decide as professionals the interest rate is too high? Because I know the Fed is going to start raising it again, and that affects the borrowing on the little guys down here. What I'm getting at is when you're putting the bonds in the market and some outlaying it, you know, because people are going to go, well, I'll buy them, but I want to get this interest rate. I mean, is there a bottom line or top line, or are you just roll the dice because of the market?
So what we've done with the last road project is we've done it as what we call private placement. So we have a select group of bidders that it goes to that bids on that type of bond issue, the size, the security, the unlimited tax pledge behind the bonds, the length of the bonds, things of that nature, the purpose of the bonds. And they have until a certain time and a certain date to submit their interest rates. We, as your financial advisor, make a recommendation to the administration as to, you know, whether to accept or reject that bid. And we provide a comparison to what other bids in the market on that given day or the day before as to where interest rates are. Obviously, with a voted unlimited tax bond, I don't mean this the way it's going to sound, so let me explain before you all gasp, but the interest rate is what it is, and you have the ability to levy a tax to pay that. If you were doing the revenue bond approach, we would have to look at that number and say, wait a minute, we don't have rates in place to cover that, so we might have to downsize the bond issue. You would not have to do that with an unlimited voted bond issue. If your rate came in at, you projected it at four, and it came in at four and a quarter because of market conditions, you know, we would recommend you accept it, but you have the ability to repay that bond issue.
Okay. Last question to the chair. Then basically, because we're going on the unlimited, it basically goes through the taxpayer, so like you explained, the rate would, if it's within reason, would be acceptable, and then we'd just have to raise the rate on the return to you, or whoever, on the taxpayers, am I correct somehow?
So what, under an unlimited tax bond issue, the city looks at what their debt service payment is on the bonds for the next year, and then, you know, on July 1, they take the taxable value divided by the dollar amount needed to meet the debt service obligation, convert that to a millage, which is, you know, $1 per $1,000 of taxable value, and then that goes on the tax bill. And then we schedule the payments when we do the bond issue, so that when the tax money comes in around September 1, September 15, you probably have a payment in October, and then in the following April, you would have another payment, and then you levy again. I mean, if your taxable value goes up, the millage rate goes down. If it goes down, your millage rate goes up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. James, what was next, or?
I mean, that's the program essentially in a nutshell here, I think, might be a good opportunity for you guys to, I know you guys have seen some of the stuff, but it's still pretty fresh, but you guys might have some reactions, some thoughts, and then also maybe, since we have a little bit of public, maybe some public comment.
Anyone from council first? Hearing none, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Jason Bear, resident. I had a clarification question. You said in the years 23 and 24, two, five miles per year being paid by ARPA fund, and then you said this project was five years at six miles. Is that five years after those two years? So it'd be a total, you know, a total of, you know, instead of 30 miles, it would be 40 miles?
No, it was actually just a typo. So it's two-and-a-half miles each year for the first two years, so that's five miles, and then it should be about 25 for the next five years, so a total of 30.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Richard Kudrick. I'm not, I got confused on something. You're talking about replacing the water lines. Is there a liner that could be put inside the water line cheaper than replacing the water line?
So lining is a project, and actually, we're currently looking at that for the Ford Street. I don't know that it's exactly cheaper, depending on circumstances, but it is less invasive, which is why you've seen, if you've been right now on Allen Road in South Gate between, say, about 75 and down to Pennsylvania, the work they're doing there is they're lining it instead of full replacement because of the invasion of a full replacement. But if you don't have, and we've got the engineers here who can, they're actually engineers on that project as well, but I think the cost is pretty close right now between the two.
Okay, if you're talking about replacing the water lines and you're taking out curbs, I understand that every tree existing in the easement belongs to the city regardless of who planted it. Any possibility you're going to be killing trees, and if you do, what's your replacement plan?
I don't believe we're going to be killing trees, considering we've, our past practice lately has been to install water main under the sidewalk and not the easement there.
Well, the trees are in the easement, you know? I'm sure the roots go in both directions to the sidewalk and the curb. I own a house with lead pipes. If you ever get around to replacing the lead pipes in my house, are you damaging my property to do this, and who's going to pay for it?
We handle the restorations for those projects.
Restoration means you are going to damage my property, and then you're going to fix it?
Yes. I mean, it's not going to be damaged, but yeah, we're going to disturb dirt, we're going to disturb lawn.
Driveways. I'm concerned about a driveway, much more than a lawn.
Well, I'm hopeful we won't have to go and tear up a driveway, but we do restore driveways.
Well, it's nice to get an answer to that question before you come over with a back hole. Thank you.
Through the chair, Your Honor. James, have we disturbed any driveways yet?
Not to our knowledge.
Okay, is there, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just one more question. Since Mr. Kudrick brought up the relining, does the relining, will that have a life expectancy equal to total replacement?
It's a bit less. What do we say?
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
Oh, yeah.
Still significant, right, but not as much as full replacement.
Okay, anything further?
Through, I guess we go, I'm sorry, is it the council or the residents, Your Honor?
Whichever, go ahead.
Lisa, could you tell us what the actual, I guess, the houses, I guess, for example, mine's estimated 130, but we only pay half of that, right? So whoever has this $60,000 is based really on a house that's roughly worth 130 or 120, am I correct? Is what James was saying, okay. And the taxes, we would notify the resident, and then whoever pays the taxes for the resident would pay into the city, like the mortgage company or the individual. Is that about right? Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, hearing anything further, the business of the study session is concluded, and we will adjourn at 6:51. Everybody, I apologize that I was late. I had a family issue that I had to deal with.
So when you go to file taxes, how much tax?